I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John, would you assist in taking roll call, please?
Jamie?
Present.
Clark is absent. John, present. Jason?
Here.
Alicia?
Here.
Donna?
Here. Okay, thank you, John. Um, I will move, uh, excuse me, sorry, I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
So, motion.
I have a motion by Jamie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Donna to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Tonight's agenda is approved. Announcements, the next school board meeting, the next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six P. M. in the G. S. L. High School Community Room, four four three, four four four. Acknowledgements. Any acknowledgements?
Yes, we do have some acknowledgements. And I will first start off by just saying thank you to Michelle Sander and her work with all the planters that she put together for us, right? They look wonderful outside of each door, so I want to say thank you to her. I also want to say thank you for, to Matt Munchausen and his work. If you haven't seen our early childhood outdoor classroom, please go take a look at that. Matt, and I'm sure he's got a little bit of help, but a lot of it had to deal with Matt and his work. It's really amazing out there, and I want to say thank you and acknowledge him. I also would like to acknowledge and thank the Glencoe Fire Department. Last Wednesday, we had a little bit of what we would call a smoldering activity that happened. Thankfully, there was no flames, but we did have, you know, a fire issue or a fire concern that happened, and they came and acted exactly how, or our system worked exactly like it should, and there was no damage on Wednesday. I also want to have a special thank you to John Templin and his work that he did. It was, it was a busy night, I'll say that, but in the end, everything worked out. We are unfortunately going to need to get a new dryer, but we're thankful that everything worked the way it was supposed to, and the fact that the damage was, was basically really minimal. So, and then also thanks to the custodial staff. When you came up here on, on that night, you could smell what happened. It was out there. And then by the time we left after a couple hours, and then even more so by the time the custodians left, the smell was basically gone because of the work that they did, and then the next morning, I don't think you could even have told that there was an issue. So, thanks to everybody that was involved in that incident that, that happened here last Wednesday night. And I also want to say thank you to the class of nineteen forty-nine. They invited me to their reunion, which was basically kind of an early dinner over at Unhinged Pizza, but also want to say thank you to them because I walked out of there with twenty-five hundred dollars worth of scholarships that they're going to be providing for the class of twenty twenty-five. And so, very generous to that, to that group, and I let the paper know that they were doing that, and so hopefully, they will acknowledge that in, in the paper. But it was, it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun hanging out with them. And then finally, whether you are aware of this or not, but M. S. B. A. changed our date from February to September, and September is now official Minnesota School Board Recognition Month. And so, I have your certificates that I know each and every year, you wait, and I'm sure that each of you in your homes have them framed in all of the years that, that we've given you your certificate of appreciation. So, with that, with that said, I do want to say thank you to our board for their work on behalf of all the students, the staff, the community, and, and everybody involved to say thank you for your work as school board members. It is appreciated. So, John. Thank you. Thank you, Alicia. There you go. And thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Donna. And thank you, Jason. Right, there you go, right?
Do you have any additional acknowledgements?
That's it for me at this point in time.
I would just like to give acknowledgement to all of our teachers, our staff, our administration for a great welcoming week and back to school last week. So, thank you for everything that you guys do to get ready for the school year and making it a, a great start to the year, from what I have heard, for our students and our family. So, thank you, guys.
I agree. I was here on the first day of school because I had to register my newest foreign exchange student, and everything was great. I mean, I walked through the building, and I didn't see any chaos or yelling or screaming or anything. I thought it was great. I thought it went smoothly.
Any additional acknowledgements? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to public input relating to the agenda. So, first call for public input, and second call for public input relating to the agenda, and a third call for public input. Okay? So, hearing none, we'll move on to reports and presentations, and tonight, we have the Activities Department.
For those that do not know, my name is Dean Schwartz. I'm the Activities Director here, and the first thing I want to say is I'm thankful. I'm thankful for the job I have and the people that I get to work with. I consider myself very lucky, and I, and I wake up and truly enjoy the place where I go every day. So, with that being said, a couple things that I want to go over first before I get to what's on the board. Tomorrow, I'm taking ten sophomores to Hutchinson for Studying Leadership Program, where they're working with everybody within the conference, and they're learning how to problem solve on their teams and go through different situations and handle it in the right way. We have a presenter that comes in and presents to them, and it's a really good program. We took ten sophomores last year, and they raved about it, and we're going to be doing it each year now, as long as we continue the program. Another thing that we're going to be doing, and we started this last year, is meetings with our G. S. L. captains. We meet with them and do this similar to what they do at the leadership, but we break it down here to our lower level, and they get a chance to talk with other teams, the problems that they have and the successes that they have, and they share that within them. On September nineteenth, we have the Katie Delwitz Run here. If you have not ever been to that, you want to come to that. We have nineteen teams this year that are attending. Fewer and fewer teams want to host a cross-country event, and we're fortunate enough that our coaches are willing to set it up with our grounds crew, and it's, it's quite an event. If you haven't been at one, it's a home one here, and you'll really get to see the grounds of how they're used here. And if you stand up at the top part of the bleachers, you can see quite a bit of the course. It's a really a good spot. Also, this year, we are hosting the J. V. Tennis Competition. It is the twenty-third of September. We're also hosting the W. C. C. Conference Championship on September twenty-sixth. The reason we're able to do this is we have twelve courts where most other teams in the conference do not have that, and it just works better to finish in a timely manner. This year, we handed out the, I don't know if you saw the calendars. I don't have any with me right now because we've handed them all out, but we had our football team go around and hand out calendars within the community and the jerseys, and thank the businesses that has helped support that and do sponsorships on those. If you look up here on the board, what I'm going to do is just go over what we have out at our new baseball and softball complex. Here is a sign at the entrance of it. These are the new dugouts. They're very, very nice, very well constructed. They're tin. The inside, I didn't know this at the beginning, but after working with showers, they ended up painting them, so everything is similar from field to field, and it really works well within the complex. And here's just another view of them. This is the entrance when you're walking on the entrance way in. Underneath there, the Booster Club has purchased, there's eight tables underneath it, there's four on each side. That's the entrance to the concession stand out there. That, that has been really heaven sent, because this summer, in the past, you know, if it rained, it was automatic cancellation of a game. This summer, there were four games going on, Matt Munchausen's Community Ed programs were using it, and because it was a light mist, we had how many parents underneath there raving about, wow, we finally have a place that we can get out of the rain. And then the kids, you know, usually when you don't have a dugout, you're soaking wet at the end of it. The kids each had a dugout, so in the innings that they were the, not out in the field, they had a place to go where they weren't being rained on. So, really nice. This is just an example of the entrance where you come in, and this entrance is looking at the fields of the varsity field, and then our eighth grade, what we call our baseball field. It is up about two feet, so people, when they sit in the, in the stands, the people in the concessions are able to stay over, look over the top of them and be able to see the field. So, it's worked out really well for us. We used it a few times in the spring, and then into the summer, they did. We're going to be setting up a program with Community Ed and then using it more going forward. And here's the inside of it. We have one countertop there. We got a big sink done right when you have those crock pots and you have people bring food in. Gives us enough storage out there. It's not too much. The other thing in here that we did, and we hadn't had water, running water out there, we have a turn-off valve on the inside that if the coaches want to water down the boxes and get rid of a little bit of the dust, they have that option. And the inside valve is to turn it on and off so we can get a few more sales in the water sales at the concessions. Here's the batting cage. This is top of the line. We're able to have two stations where they're live hitting. We have eight stations on, on the, on the side where they can do soft toss, and then we'll have another four more on this side. It is outstanding. We can get, I think it was eighteen kids can hit at a single time in there and get many reps through as far as practice drills. Here is the shed that was out, that is, has been put out there. This is on the backside of the batting cage. We never had storage for any of our nets. We now have a place right there that the nets and equipment can be placed in, and you can see inside the storage, very well organized, and it'll only get better. We have more things that obviously we put in there because everything is out right now. We do allow the community come out and use it. We've had people come out, they've been hitting softballs during football practice when I've been out here right now, and we've had other people using the fields. So, it's nice to see them being used at this time of the year yet. The reason this picture is on here, this is the fence that was added to Field Eight Eleven, I believe it is. What I wanted to show you is, a lot of the new fields have a four-foot fence now so that people can go up and lean on it, and they don't have to look through a fence, and it's far enough down that it's not in a dangerous area of them being hit. So, it's really worked out well. We are not, at this time, looking to do the additional things. Things that would need to be done yet is, we do not have pitching down the bullpens down for baseball yet, and we do not have pitching for the softball. They are additions that we're looking to do. We're also looking to look, put trees in the outfield of the softball complex, and I'm working with Conkey on that, and then also with Dean Engelmann, I've been speaking to them about the different possibilities of what we could put out there for trees. So, that's what I have for a presentation for you guys. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Dean, you mentioned the group of ten that you're taking to Hutchinson for the leadership. How are those individuals selected?
Talking to the other coaches, looking for people that are influential and influencing others that aren't afraid to speak up when they need to. So, that's how the group was chosen.
You said that the, are the fields able to be used by the public, or is it just the fields, or can people use the batting cages too?
We've had people using all of them. We have many people that have come out and used the batting cages like you're talking about. We don't allow them to use our equipment besides the nets and that, but everything is out there. Mr. Munchausen has provided tees that are able to stay out there, that people can use them on the sides. And so far, people have been great and respectful in the stuff that we have out there.
So, they don't have to, like, sign up for them or anything? They can just go out there and use them?
They have, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Have we increased security and, and cameras and stuff to those complexes yet? And, and, I mean, I don't know if we ever have enough on our campuses in general, but do we have enough for now, and is there a plan to add more?
Michelle and I have talked about that for the future. Right now, we don't have anything additional planned in. We do have a camera right over our varsity softball field that also goes to the cage, and then you can also see into our equipment area. So, it's in a good spot that it's at right now of the main area that gets the most usage. But in the future, we will have to add cameras.
So, the answer is, yes, there's, there is cameras. No, there's not enough. But yes, there's enough.
Kind of, sort of.
That's exactly how I said it.
Right. But yeah, and that's something that we do, we look at every year. You know, that's with the Safe Schools Dollars. We now are using a vast majority of that for the S. R. O., where, like, this last year, we got to put in some more cameras because of that. And so, we are still balancing, but it is something that is continuously upgraded and added. When you look at our camera system, how many do we have now, Michelle? Three hundred? I mean, it's, it's significant, and, and it really does deter and, and help. But obviously, when you look at our campus, it's, it's pretty large. So, it, it is something that we always continue to talk about.
Dean, I'd like to thank you for all your hard work out there. I know you spearheaded a lot of the fundraising and stuff out there, and thanks to our generous, you know, the, the name sponsor that's out there, but I know there was others too, but thanks to all the sponsors that's made that facility possible.
Yes, thank you. Security Bank, they donated one hundred and eighty thousand. We had Stevens Seminary with another twenty-five thousand that helped contribute to it, and then the Booster Club has continued to fund those costs that are out there. And then, like I said, there are a few more coming up, but what we would like to do is give it a year or two, live in it before we make any more decisions, you know, as far as the additions that are there. It's a great facility right now and very usable, but we want to give it time because with time, just like when you build a new house, there's always things you'd want to change. Well, we're going to give it some time right now, and then talk with the coaches and the people that use it the most, and then make the decisions going forward.
I would echo what Jason just said also. Thank you everyone for your work, and thank you to all the organizations and individuals who helped make it possible.
Yeah, we're very lucky that we live in the community that we do.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Yes, this'll be my last one.
Okay, we'll move on to the Business Managers Report.
Thank you, Alicia. I do have quite a few things to hopefully quickly go over for you. Just, it's been busy. Audit time and back-to-school time and just a lot of different things going on. The first thing I want to talk about was our review and comment. As you remember, we had to do that for our building bond. That'll be coming up on, for election in November. We did receive back our letter from the Department of Education from the Commissioner, and that was approved. We didn't have to make any changes. It was approved, good to go. So, that now will get published in the paper. It's already on our school website. So, Tricia and Jacqueline were working on that to get ready to get, go on in the paper. So, we have that. And then, along with that, Chris will be sharing information about the public meetings and what we have set up, so I'll let him cover that as we get going. Couple of different things regarding tiling project, and John, feel free to jump in here. John and I both attended a Buffalo Creek Watershed District Meeting that happened the end of August, and this is regarding the north of the Glencoe North Central Draining System, and we had gotten a letter to attend that because it could have financial impact to the school. After going to the meeting, talking through some things, meeting with a couple of the people, at this point, we don't see any impact that it's going to have on the school. So, we'll, they'll keep us informed with that, but nothing that's going to affect us. The other thing that we are working on that affects drainage is, if you remember all the rain back in June, and Dean left here, but we had a lot of standing water north of our track shed, north of the complex out there, and it was caused by it wasn't draining over to the east ditch. So, we kind of just left it sit. It got real close to going into the track shed, but we, we avoided that. So, trying to problem solve what was going on, realizing it's not our tile the problem, it's tile farther down the road. So, we have met with Larry Phillips from Buffalo Creek Watershed and another gentleman, and John Templin's been involved trying, trying to solve this. John's kind of been in on some of those discussions as well. So, we're kind of letting them work on some ideas and some quotes of how we can go from the north, right behind the north complex there, to get the water draining through on our property and not having to go across fifteen to the next property owner's property. So, they've kind of sketched out a map for us. We have another idea that we're going to take a look at. So, something we're working on, we don't know what the cost is going to be. We think we can probably get this tiling taken care of relatively cheap when it comes to tiling. We might be able to connect into our own fifteen-inch line that comes into the wetland or goes out of the wetland on the east side there. So, something we're working on to hopefully take care of all the drainage on the north side going into the future, so we don't have any additional issues with that. Like, did I cover all that, John? Anything else on that?
He did a very good job.
Just an update on all of our projects that took place over the summer, our long-term facility maintenance projects, and anything else that was covered by capital outlay. The greenhouse has been completed. We were given occupancy, didn't have any issues with the building inspector. We had training, the week of workshops, so we had a number of our staff that's going to be using and involved in that training. It, it's pretty high-tech when you go in there, the weather station that's in there, the science department and the ag department, they were both very excited when they saw the controls and how they worked and how they can graph weather and monitor all those different, different things. So, even if they're not using it for plants, they can still use it in their science world. So, they're all pretty excited. They got the table set up in there. So, the sign has been ordered for the greenhouse. That'll probably not be here for another three weeks or so. And then we have to finish the landscaping, so they're going to do some more spreading of dirt back there. We kind of want to get the sign and the footings done for that, and then they can kind of finish that off, and we can go on to the next phase of, of what we want to do. We got additional cement on the east, or the west side of the greenhouse. So, if you haven't taken a look, or if you haven't seen inside and want to look at it, just let me know, or Chris or John, we can get you in there so you can see it. Additionally, the pool cover was finished on the swimming pool. The lower locker room was finished with all the work that went on down there, the, all the new lockers, the new epoxy floor. We did some, four classrooms at Lakeside, got new counters along their, where their univent goes. We're doing one more vanity, new vanity in the visitors' locker room here at the high school. The hot water lines got done. The univents at Lincoln got done, and there's two more univents getting done at Lakeside, and they started that work this afternoon. So, a lot of projects happening, so it's nice to see them all getting completed and so we can start working on the next list of projects, and we have that list ready to go. Another thing that Chris and I have been working on with Ellers, Ellers, as you know, is our financial advisors that we work with on all our bonding type issues. Every year, we get a letter from them that they review our bonds, and they review when they're callable and when would be a right time to refinance those bonds. So, real similar to like, if you're going to refinance your mortgage at home, they watch the interest rates, watch when you can take the best advantage of the dollar or the savings that you would have on that original bond. We've reached that point, they think. As of right now, when they ran their numbers in August, we have a potential savings of pretty close to three hundred thousand that we can put towards the twenty fifteen bond. So, what they're doing right now is they're going to continue watching what's those rates are and what's happening in the bond world with election and the feds reducing those rates coming up now in September. We're not quite sure, and they don't want, you don't want to refinance it when it's not going to be the most advantage, advantageous for the school district. So, right now, they would like to move ahead with it if everything looks good. So, the next date they're going to run those numbers are October eighth, and then they will plan to be at the October Board Meeting. If everything goes through, they will go through the refunding estimates, the resolutions and everything that you need to do as a board if you decide to go through with the refinancing, and then it would go out for bids, and then we'd accept the bids at the November Board Meeting. So, it's pretty good news that a potential of saving almost three hundred thousand. I mean, it's a lot of money. It's over the course of the length of the bond, so it's, it doesn't have a large tax impact each year to an individual property owner, but it's enough of a savings that it's, it'd be a good time to jump on that if we can. So, we'll have more for you at the October Board Meeting if we go ahead with that. Just a little update on the audit and where things are coming out. Just about have, thought we had just about every number entered that we could, and then a couple things came up today. We had a couple payables that came through that we wanted to run through, a couple other adjusting entries. But right now, things are looking really good financially-wise, no big surprises. The only thing that kind of threw a wrench in for me is, when I just got done talking about all the projects that were completed, about two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of those projects were supposed to be completed in June, May-June. The greenhouse was supposed to be done and not paid off in August. It was supposed to be paid off in May. The, a couple of the univents were supposed to be done. Seal coating was supposed to be done in June. That got rained out. That just got completed. So, a lot of things like that affect your fund balance, of course, and we always know that with summer projects, what fiscal year they're going to get paid in. So, my last projection on fund balance, we were looking at about a twenty-four percent fund balance. Right now, with all those things that didn't happen and a couple additional revenues that came in, and we'll go through this a lot more detail in October and November, but I just kind of wanted to give you a heads up because we talk audits so much. Right now, we're closer to twenty-six percent fund balance. So, healthy, you know, twenty-four percent was going to be healthy. On the downside, the flip side of that, if you looked at Chris's email regarding enrollment, right now, our enrollment compared to our June end-of-school-year enrollment, we're down fifty-five students. Doesn't take long to do the math, fifty-five times about ten grand, and you can see where we're at. So, you can see how quickly that fund balance disappears just when you say, oh, we're at twenty-six thou, or twenty-six percent. Well, now we've paid out two hundred and seventy-si- thousand in projects. That brings it back down to that twenty-four percent. Now you take off what you've lost in enrollment that we didn't budget that much for. So, we'll be reworking all those numbers. Still financially strong. Yep, we'll have to watch enrollment, and we'll have to see what that does going forward into the next year. So, all positive right now as far as the audit. As far as I know, no findings that they have found. So, again, they'll be here to present at the October Board Meeting. So, that's just a quick update on that, and then I'll have levy information for you when we get to the levy agenda item. So, that was a lot. Real quickly, any questions that you might have?
Well, we need a new dryer, or is it just going to be repaired?
We're just going to get a clothesline. It's a lot cheaper.
Amen.
We just got a quote, oh, about five o'clock, John sent it to me. It came through about eight thousand for the dryer to replace that. Yeah, it was seven, just about eight thousand, and then we can, for another seven hundred and fifty dollars, there's a new feature that you can add on, and John was quickly explaining it to me that it's got a sensor, so if you have, like, wet towels sitting in there every so many minutes, it'll, the tumbler will go, so it's not sitting. So, there's a couple new features compared to when we bought this last dryer. John was saying when he talked to Mike Wittis, you know, who is as old as Methuselah, right? And I say that in a nice way, because Mike has been here since the new building project. He can only remember replacing that dryer twice. So, I think we've got our years out of it and been very fortunate. So, about eight thousand is what we're looking at. So...
Ironically, the reason that they were using that dryer was because the kitchen dryer was not working.
So, yeah, they were drying kitchen towels, so the custodian is blaming, it's the kitchen's fault, because, but the one thing that...
So, do we need two dryers at eight thousand dollars for a total of sixteen thousand dollars?
The kitchen dryer is only about four hundred and fifty to replay, or to repair, so we're repairing that, but...
We did learn that we want our kitchen staff to do towels on Wednesday night, though.
Yeah.
It's a lot quieter of a night than any of the other nights.
Who says learning isn't happening at G. S. L.?
At all.
Right, because, you know, the night before, there was a whole volleyball game, and, you know, just by chance, that's the night that they did the towels. You know, if this would have happened the night before, it would have been a really interesting night, so...
And the kitchen was worried, now they're short towels because they're all melted.
Because these went away.
The other learning does continue to go on. The thing we learned is, talking to the rep from the dryer company, he said... The thing we learned is talking to the rep from the dryer company, he said, what were you drying? My first question, I hope there wasn't jerseys in there because now we're talking a lot more than eight thousand. Nope, they're drying towels, kitchen towels. And we told that to the agent, he said, you wouldn't believe how many fires or smoldering like that they have because if kitchen towels especially aren't washed properly, they have grease in them and grease will set off. Now, we don't have a, the grill or a fryer or anything, so we don't have as much grease. But, he said between restaurants and, you know, those type of places, if towels aren't washed good, hot water, whatever, to get that grease out, they're more apt to start a fire, so. So, we did learn something.
Good learning.
Yep. And thankfully, it wasn't worse. So, it's been busy, but if you have any questions, let me know.
John or Michelle, do you, on the north end where the cross-country track runs, is that water gone down?
The, the water's gone down, yeah. There is a plan in place if it does rain to, Rickert will come in and we will mediate in a hurry.
Okay.
We will take care of it and...
We got all those runners coming in in about ten days.
Yep, and that was one of the reasons why we were kind of working on this is because when I was out there with the track program trying to put all the pits away back in, in the July with my equipment, it was very wet. We were fine with there at the trap shed, but five feet on the other side of the fence, it wasn't...
And that's right where they run, so...
I know.
Yep.
So, we, we've got a plan.
Good.
Okay, we'll move on to principals reports. Bill, would you like to start us off?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Alicia, and good evening. I'll highlight some of the items on our elementary report, starting near the top. You know, last, last month, we talked a little bit about two of our new teams, Science of Reading team, which was formed to support, excuse me, to support teachers with ongoing professional development and support as we work, as we work through the units. And our Tier One team, you can see below there, which we are going to meet monthly at, at each building and then every other month, pre-K through six. So, just backing up a little bit, Science of Reading, you can see elementary teachers, all special education teachers in the district, EL teachers, completed Unit Two Part One on August twenty-ninth during workshop week. And we will continue that through, throughout this year with, with the new calendar. I'll go down toward, toward the middle, look at our solution focus teams. One element I, I added there for our behavioral interventions with, with the new position, our social emotional learning coordinator. It's going to be a huge benefit at the elementary level. We've not been able to really do a good job for, for those interventions for kids who need a social emotional intervention, a Tier Three intervention. And this, now we've got the capacity to do that, so I'm grateful we have that position and we're already seeing benefit from that position, working with, with those kids in need of that support. Under curriculum and assessment, we've, we've had discussions the last few years since we came back to school after, after the shutdown ended, whether to go back to the national norms that were presented, that were published by assessments. So, we use the FastBridge assessments at the elementary level and, you know, those, those norms really were not good during the pandemic, you know, those are pre-pandemic norms. So, those local norms that we have shared throughout the years with you, the last four or five years, were what we based it on, comparing our kids within the GSL system. So, this year, looking, looking at data, working with our two school psychs, Kelly and Jen, we are going back to using those national norms because we've, we've closed the gap in, in the, in the four years since we came back to school. So, looking forward to that. I know teachers have been wanting that, so I'm grateful that it's, it's the right time. I want to talk a little bit about Title One toward the bottom. Tricia, thank you for all the help behind the scenes. After, after many revisions we worked on, MDE has accepted our four plans and the funds are, are ready to be, to be used, so we, we appreciate that. I'm going to go to the back. If you look at school community partnership, Lincoln, we have our first all-school celebration on Friday, giving the, giving the kids an intro to our theme this year, superheroes, and we're, we're going to have a great time with that on Friday afternoon. You can look at, at some of the other school community partnership. I wanted to thank the board for giving us those two check-in days on August twenty-eighth and September third. It gives us a way to meet families in a more detailed way and to begin to collect data. Finally, I do want to recognize our elementary PTO and I do want to read the names. They just do outstanding work, supporting kids, supporting teachers. They provided a great lunch during workshop week on the twenty-eighth. So, our reps are, for our staff, Bertina Schra and Jen Crossed. Parents, Chelsea Boddleberg, Mandy Conklin, Jill Gratchick, Hannah Jerabek, Amanda Marsh, Corinne Schmieg, Jenny Voit and Kelly Wedendorf. What, what questions do you have on that report? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Matt?
Good evening. So, the, Matt, wow, let me restart. The vast majority of my presentation here is going to be about our MCA scores. They were released, I think we got the box from Pearson last week, I brought them up. They're not embargoed, so we can talk about them now. And I want to take time to kind of reflect to a year ago when we talked about MCA scores and historically, they have not been great at the junior high, senior high level. And I remember talking specifically about potentially why that might be and, and talked about, you know, how I don't think it's an ability thing, I think it's an effort thing. We talked about what it means when individuals opt out of a test and, and the impact that it has on a school district and, and what it means when somebody opts out of a test if they're flagged with, as an ESL learner or as a special education learner as well, that many times it affects a, a district a number of times. So, what I've got in front of you here is just the junior high, senior high data as well as the district data as far as MCA testing, both in twenty-three and in twenty-four. So, it can show you where we've been at as a district and where we've been at as a junior high, senior high over the last two years. I played with these, these numbers quite a bit because there's so many different ways you could present it and talk about it. I, I tried to bring it in a way that would maybe answer some questions or show some things that you as a board would want to see. But, the highlight of this is for the junior high, senior high is we've increased scores in everything, every category at the seven twelve level from math, reading and science. And I think that was due to a couple of different things. First and foremost, I think it was due to a different setup in how we tested our students. Sarah Beckman did a really good job of kind of looking at this, went to leadership, talked to some of our staff who are sitting here in front of you tonight about how can we do this better than we've done it in the past? And we had students test with their specific content teachers, so if they were going to test in science, they tested with their science teacher. Or if they're going to test in English, they tested with their English teacher that they've had more of a comfortability level thing for those students and also an expectation level of those students as well, that if I have you every single day in math and I know that you take this math test and you're done in five minutes, I know that that's not to the ability that I see you every single day. The other thing that we did is we told students that they were in that class period for, I think it was two or three full days, regardless of whether it took them five minutes or three full days to take that test. Obviously, you know, cell phones, which we talked about last weekend, but cell phones, when it comes to standardized tests, is they're not, they're not allowed to be out at all. So, students were told, you can either take the test or you can read a book for those three days, whichever you'd like, and it turns out they'd rather take a test than read a book, which was kind of surprising to me. But, what I'm getting at here is the change in the approach that we've had has led to increased test scores. The light green that you see in the far right is the percent improvement from the junior high, senior high or a district. And then, the brighter green that you see in the more of the middle, middle column there are the, the areas that we're above state average in. So, in math, we're above state average as a district. In reading, we're above state average at the senior high level and then in science, we're above state average again at the senior high level. Another thing that we did, kind of talked to students about these test scores, I talk to students all the time at the seven twelve level of, there's got to be a why behind you do something. And I think that's been a struggle too with standardized tests because when I was in high school, you had to pass a test to graduate and then that changed and it changed and it changed to a point where now you just have to take the test. Doesn't matter what the score is or if you opt out, you're still able to graduate. So, I met with the students, each class individually last year, Sarah Beckman and I did. We talked about effort, we talked about ability level, but I also talked to them about what we use those scores for. I went in-depth about the work that I'm doing and I've talked to the board about this in the past and I will in the coming months too, with AdSIS funding and getting a full-time interventionist at the junior high, senior high, starting next school year. And how we use our AFAS data, we use our MCA data, we also use teacher input and grades and based on what those things tell us, they could be put into interventions because it would tell us that this is what they need. If you struggle in reading, we're going to get you into reading intervention. If we struggle in math, we're going to get you a math intervention. Something that we haven't had in the past, but again, something that I think with, when the AdSIS grants open, it's not a grant actually, it's a, it's just a process through MDE, but when that opens in January, I have a plan in place right now to fund at our level, at the junior high, senior high level, an interventionist full-time starting next year. I would like to, to mention with the test scores that Sarah and I have talked quite in-depth about potentially taking our testing calendar or testing schedule even a step further. I don't want to get into what that looks like today because we are a long ways away from testing season right now, but I do think a lot of the, the increased test scores that we've had is the change in how we, we had students test. So, by and large, I'm very, very happy with our test scores. These are the best test scores that we've had in the seven years that I've been at GSL. I do expect our test scores to, to make another jump again next year, which is, which is a, a great thing. So, I'm going to pause there before I move on to the next because that was the very largest part of my, my presentation for any questions that you might have on MCA testing.
I want to thank you, Matt. We've had conversations over the last year, I believe, about those interventions and your work and to try to pursue it. I know we have two of them at the elementary level sitting in front of me here and I've heard very positive things with the work that they do, so I'm excited to see where this comes and where it goes and I just want to say thank you and keep moving forward.
I'm, I'm beyond fortunate to have a great staff that thinks outside the box and doesn't think I'm too crazy when I think outside the box too, because it allows for ideas and change and, and opportunities for growth. So, I appreciate you guys as a board that kind of put up with me sometimes when I come to you with crazier ideas. Sometimes they work like this, this is, this is like the best report I've ever gotten to give and sometimes they don't work. Those reports are a little bit harder to give. So, I appreciate your guys' understanding too.
You had said that the kids that are opting out of it are rather take the test than read a book, so does that mean there's more kids taking the test then, than normal?
Correct.
So, if we have higher scores and more kids are taking the test, that also is a positive.
The other thing too that I think plays a part too, and, and I won't name the student, but Emily Canerza is, I think solely responsible for having probably one of the highest MCA test scores we have take a math test last year because this individual is almost full-time PSEO. She, she knew this individual very well and I think her and Mike Haves sat the person down and said, hey, please come take this test because it's a test that, when they took it, very much so came back as an exceeds and had they opted out, like many of our PSEO students do and I don't necessarily blame them because they're PSEO and they're out of the building. Most of those, those scores, because those are our higher achieving students looking for that college credit, most of those scores that we would be getting exceeding as a district are coming back as does not meet. And, and that I just don't think is reflective as our district. It's not reflective of our, of our students and it's not reflective of our staff. So, I, I think the personal connections and the personal conversations that people, and I'm, I'm using Emily as an example here, but many of our staff have had of, this is important and even if it's maybe not important to you, it's important to a bigger picture in this district, please come take that test.
So, in other words, there are a lot of variables that are going to change these numbers and, but I think having more of the kids taking the test is definitely a good indication on how much better they are doing because if you have more kids taking the test and the scores are going up and they're, that averages, you know, and you're doing their averages, then that I would think would be, sounds like a positive for GSL.
I mean, this is, it is and, and this is, these, I mean, I'm very happy to see these scores, but they didn't surprise me either. I mean, one, one of the things even a year ago when we sat here and we talked about, you know, why are our test scores the way that they are, one of the, the measuring sticks that I've used since I've been here is our, our ACT score. And ACT, when a student takes the ACT, it's because they want to take the ACT, not because they have to, not because they opt out and it negatively affects our ACT score. And our ACT score in the seven years that, well, I can't claim this year yet because we haven't done it yet, but in the six years I've been here, has been at or above the state average, which tells me if our ACT scores are above the state average, why would our MCA scores be lower then? And again, you can make numbers say anything that you want and I've been told in the past that I should be a salesman if this ever doesn't work out for me, so I'm probably doing a pretty good job at that here too, I think. But, I, I just, I firmly believe in our staff at GSL. I firmly believe in our students and our community and I, I think the green that you see on this page is much more of a representation of what we have here than what we have looked at in the past.
Well, I'm just thinking, I'm just saying that it, it's a good thing and to look at and I think it's a very positive thing that you, you guys can take as a whole, that you guys are doing the right thing and positively impacting students.
Yep, it's, it's, it's been fantastic. I, I tell the junior high, senior high staff that are sitting here can, can attest to this, every single staff meeting we have, every single month, I start out with saying or I end with saying, probably both, I talk too much. I wouldn't trade this staff or this community for anybody and, and I've worked in other districts en route to getting to the position that I'm in here and GSL is a special community and this is a special staff and I just, I'm so happy and proud for our staffs and for our students that this is what it is because this is more representative than what we have talked about in the past years. And just so that you, we're all clear and on the same page, there is plenty of room for improvement here. Like, I'm not going to sit on my laurels and say, hey, we've done great things, let's go back to, you know, just being good. I, I do see that we're going to continue to improve and, and there's going to be more green on these pages in years to come too.
We've had conversations like at, at our superintendent level of, well, can't the state just not count those kids, right? To be able to, well, of course, their answer back is, there's going to be so many more kids that won't take the test then. And, and, and maybe schools encouraging kids to not take the test or doing those types of things and so that's part of the, the, the balance, so. We encourage them to take it.
And the only thing, and that's the best thing you can do with kids is to be positive, as positive as possible with kids because they just, they do better when you're more positive than when you're negative.
Yep, I agree. So, I'm going to move on to the second half then, which is much shorter. We have homecoming week coming up next week as a district. So, one of the big things, and I, I mentioned it very briefly in August, but I have had a chance to talk to my student council and I have had a chance to talk to the, the coronation candidates because we do have our five king and queen candidates recognized already. We're changing coronation this year. So, instead of doing coronation at eight o'clock on Monday night, we're going to do coronation at two thirty and we're going to do it in the black gym in front of all of our student body, kindergarten through twelfth grade. And shockingly, I have not heard anything from anybody that's been negative about that, which in the seven years I've been here, it's very rare that that happens. But, I think again, it goes back to the why are you doing that? And the why for this is, when I think of homecoming, I think of student engagement, I think of school pride and I think it's really hard to do that when one of the biggest things of, of homecoming week is coronation where you recognize your king and your queen. And over the first six years that I've been here, coronation's at night and it's, it's fantastic because there's a couple seniors and juniors that are there, which are friends of the people who are on the court. And then, there's the parents and maybe grandparents that come, but by and large, there's, there's less than a hundred people that have been at coronation every night. And my thought was, let's put it in front of the student body, we're going to have twelve hundred plus kids there that get to witness what this is, so when they get older, hey, this is what homecoming is, this is one of the things we can do. Bill and, and Kim just selected the junior attendance, so they now get to go out in front of their peers as, as first or second graders as well, whereas in the past, I don't think any, there's been, never ever been... been, never ever been an elementary presence there besides the parents of those individuals. So I just, I think it makes more sense to kind of build that sense of school involvement and school excitement. And I've been working with Dan Wannas at the bus garage with busing, I've been working with Bill and Joy about kind of logistics of getting kids here, but the plan is, it's going to start Monday the 16th at 2:30 or 2:35, and it's going to be done by 3:05. So it's going to be a 30-minute thing that kicks off homecoming week for everybody, K through 12, and hopefully we have a good rest of the week after that. Just to point out for anybody that may be interested at home or that's just hearing this, it is going to be livestreamed, so it'll be on our website, they can go to our YouTube channel, watch, and then parents and guardians are welcomed to attend as well. So we have a section that, I just talked to Chris and Beth Rumorall, our high school secretary, about where we're going to put them, that's going to be best for parents to view, because I'm usually not very good at that stuff. My wife has to help me all the time about positioning. So I feel pretty good about that. School photos are going to be this Friday, September 13th, at the junior high, senior high level. School reach information will be going out to parents and students tomorrow about what that is. They'll be setting up in the commons, it'll be John Grotman again through Creekview Images. And then lastly, our blood drive is scheduled for Friday, October 6th, which right now is scheduled for the Purple Gym, but I do know that if it gets too hot, we have some of those days that are like this week, it's going to be quite warm. The temperature gets too warm to have the blood drive there, I may visit with Bill about getting it in the black gym where it's more temperature controlled. So any questions for me?
One quick clarification for the coronation with regard to the families or the public, is there a fee for entry unlike the activities and the games that there will be?
That's a good question. There is no fee. So if they come, they're there to watch, and like I said, we'll have a place for them, and it's going to be different. This goes to one of the out-of-the-box ideas that, I don't know how it's going to go. I'm very excited about trying it, but I'll tell you in October how I thought coronation during the school day went.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you and good evening. I also would like to echo, to say thank you to everybody on a great start to the school year. Also want to say thanks to our staff for a great workshop week. I thought things went really well, and I'm sure the staff sitting out there enjoyed my speech and the length of it this year. One of the best ever, I would assume. The other thing that I want to talk about is the Ruff HVAC project. Obviously, we have November 5th coming up. We have kind of finalized our meeting schedule time where we're going to get out, primarily Michelle and I, but all of you are welcome to show up at any point in time, but we're going to start having meetings with our public and our communities, at every one of our communities, and so that'll start in a couple of weeks. September 23rd, we're looking at going to New Auburn and Broughton. On October 7th is going to be at Plato, and I still have to finalize the time and the place for Plato, and that'll happen tomorrow. October 4th, we'll have this in Glencoe. October 15th, October 14th will be in Glencoe, right here in the community room. October 15th will be in Biskey and Silver Lake. We were also, there's still a couple of letters to the editor that I'm going to have, we're still talking about some individual meetings that are out there, the public, or the notice that we're going to send on top of the, what was also in the newsletter that came to everybody. You know, the real goal is to obviously make sure that everybody knows about the election, understands the information that's coming about in the election, and so far, it's been really positive in terms of the conversations that I've been having and, you know, getting that word out about the importance of this. When you talk about the blood drive and having that HVAC opportunity, there's an example of why some of those places that we have for the HVAC opportunities or improvements to happen, because that allows some of those types of things to happen and get more temperature-controlled with some of those facilities.
Chris, I just want to add, the October 14th meeting here in Glencoe, that's the night of the board meeting.
Yep.
So we're having the meeting following the board meeting, we're going to have Ellers here, and the Ruff guys from Tremco will be here, one or two, or whatever they come with. But we kind of lined it all up for that night, so we can go, just plan to stay right in here after our board meeting, so that'll be a busy night.
Once this schedule gets finalized, I'll get it on the website. We do have a quick link that is on the top of our website that does have all the information on the election information, it has the truth in, or the review and comment that's on there, the tax impact sheet that, you know, obviously people have, and I have that around here somewhere. The tax impact sheet that talks a little bit about what the cost is going to be and that kind of stuff. So that's on there, and we'll just continue to do what we can to get the word out for that. So obviously something that's very important that's coming up here on November 5th, and we encourage everybody to get out there and vote. That's basically what I have. There's really no news on LCTN, things are moving with that. We're still monitoring the situation and even that line that we have with CenturyLink. So far, we haven't heard back from them to see where things are at, but we're not using that because we don't need it. The transition with Southwest, West Central has been really good, and we'll continue to monitor that situation. The rest of the stuff is on the agenda, and we'll go from there.
What night did you say the month you were in Plato?
Plato will be on October 7th, and we just got to kind of finalize the time. It looks like it's going to be a six o'clock right before their fire meeting, and then hopefully we can get those people to come a little early. I'll send this stuff out to all of you guys as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for Chris? Okay, any committee reports? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to approving tonight's consent agenda, and there's also an addendum to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Jamie, do I have a second?
A second.
And a second by Jason, to approve the consent agenda along with the addendum. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda and the addendum are approved. Old business, there's none at this time, so move on to new business. Action item A are the donations received, this is just information only. The following donations were accepted for, or accepted with appreciation. We have donations from the GSL Elementary PTO, the GSL Boosters Club, the GSL Booster Concessions, and the Taylor Lepal Memorial. So thank you to all those organizations for their generous donations. We'll move on to action item B, the preliminary levy certification. School districts are required to certify proposed levies for school district operations for the 2025-2026 school year by September 30th. The proposed levy allows the various county auditors to prepare tax statements for the school district property owners. Business Manager Sandra will provide information about the preliminary levy certification. Superintendent Sanju and Business Manager Sandra recommend that the board certify the maximum levies permitted. The school board may lower the levies in December when they are required to certify the final levies. However, the school board cannot increase the amount of any levy beyond the amount identified in the preliminary levy authorization. So I'll move, I'll ask for a motion in a second, and then I'll have, Michelle provide the additional information.
I have to move.
So I have a motion by Donna, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Jamie, and then, Michelle, you have additional information for us?
Yep, just a little bit of information briefly here. The levy sheets came out on Friday, late Friday afternoon, so I haven't had a lot of time to start dissecting them, and then this morning was the MDE levy workshop. It was a virtual workshop that was all morning, so we kind of walked through all the pieces of the levies, and I'll take those numbers and start going through all them to make sure everything looks like it should for our district, including all those enrollment estimates that we had in place prior to now what we know what we have. So I'll be working on all that. So currently, as I dropped in all the numbers from what MDE has, and they always have some glitches that they find that they have to tweak, but based on their numbers right now, the percent increase is right about 3%, 3.3%. But that does include the levy authority for achievement and integration. If you remember, last year, we implemented the achievement and integration program, but we under-levied that amount, and we only took the state aid. So that is included in there, and we'll have further discussions on that. You know, at this point, we've said we were just going to use state aid to fund that program. If you remove that, if the board would decide to under-levy that amount, again, that drops the levy increase to about 2.5%. So it does make a little bit of a difference. So once we have time to kind of work everything out, I think we get through our election in November. If the election passes, of course, that changes this amount as well, so we have to work through all those details. So again, we want to approve the maximum, because if you set a certain dollar amount, you can't go back in December and say, oh, let's add this back in. So you just approve the maximum, that was a change made many years ago, and then we do the final levy in December.
Questions for Michelle? Okay, so we have a motion by Donna and a second by Jamie to certify the maximum amount permitted by law for the preliminary levy for the 2025-2026 school year. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item C, trip abroad for 2027. This was enclosure number two and three. Bria Whiblemow, the social studies teacher, requests approval for a 10-day trip to Scotland and Ireland in June 2027. Students who will be upperclassmen in the 2026-2027 school year would be eligible and would have the option of earning a .25 elective credit. The trip would be educational and align with the world history and world geography courses. The Scotland and Ireland trip would be approximately $4,939. Exact amount would, will depend upon time of enrollment. By booking our tour now, students will have 30 months to make their payments. Donations will be sought from charitable organizations such as the Lions Clubs, Snow Pros, and the Booster Club. I'll request a motion in a second, and then we have Bria here tonight with some information. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by John, do I have a second? I'll make that second, and then we'll let Bria present. Do you have stuff to present, or just questions from us?
I'm just here to answer questions if you have them.
Does anybody have questions for Bria?
My question was if you could play the old course at St. Andrews.
That would be amazing. Not that I know of.
She did have the answer for me, so I'm not sure.
I'll look into it.
All right.
You say you want a chaperone?
Sure seemed to be kind of like a bucket list of my world. Sounds like a wonderful trip.
Yeah, thank you for putting these opportunities together for our students.
So this would be 10th through, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders? Or 10th and 11th?
I mean, to recruit ninth and 10th, and then by the time they travel, they'll be upperclassmen.
Okay, that way, okay.
Okay, well, no questions, we'll move on to vote. So I have a motion by John and a second by myself, to approve the request by Bria Whiblemow to go to Scotland and Ireland on a 10-day trip abroad in June 2027. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries, your trip is approved.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, action item D, Education Minnesota Glencoe-Silver Lake Memorandum of Understanding. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving the Memorandum of Understanding Read Act from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
And a second by John. Any questions or comments before we move forward with a vote?
It basically outlines what we've discussed, and we've had several meetings with this, I believe a couple of board members have also met. It just basically discusses the compensation, and then the plan, and then ultimately, you know, kind of that whole procedure on how we're going to go through with the Read Act. So thanks to the staff for working with us, I think it was a really good process, and ready to keep moving forward. So far, I think this training has been really good. It's been something that we're doing, I think, things a little bit different compared to some different districts. We've got our whole entire K6 going through that training. That's not what the law is quote-unquote requiring, but when we looked at our staff and we looked at the opportunity for those teams to all go forward, we felt that it was a great opportunity to do that. And so far, so good. Thanks to the board, again, for, back in February or March, whenever it was, for us adjusting those calendars, for some of that training that we've had coming up, and so that's been outlined, and we'll make sure that we keep our families informed of those early dismissals that are going to be coming for this purpose. And so, got to say thank you to them for that flexibility, because that does, I know that those changes sometimes are hard to deal with, so we'll keep moving forward with the Read Act and benefiting our students.
I think one more opportunity to just acknowledge the work that our teaching staff and administration did, not only to put together this MOU, but also just the work that the teaching staff is doing in the professional development that they're being presented with. As an educator, I'm going through the same types of professional development in the district where I teach, and so I know exactly what our teaching staff here at GSL is doing. And as Matt said in his report, I think that this is just another example of the professional development that our staff is doing, that will absolutely not only benefit our staff across the board in the science of reading, but ultimately our students here at GSL and their families too. So thank you for the work that you've done up to this point with the training and the continued work that you will do with the training as it moves forward. It's substantial as far as the amount of professional development that is part of this Read Act. I don't know that the general public realizes the lift that we're asking school districts financially, which the legislature has provided dollars for this. The substantial lift not only of dollars and cents, but also time, commitment, and I think that this shows really the commitment of all districts and our staff within the district, how much we care about kids and we care about their education. So thank you to everyone involved here at GSL with the work done, well done so far. Keep up the good work.
I have a motion by myself and a second by John, to approve the Memorandum of Understanding Read Act with Education Minnesota GSL from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Upstayed.
Oh, yep, opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item E, PSEO, Agreement with Minnesota State University Mankato. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving the Joint Powers Agreement with Minnesota State University Mankato for the 2024-2025 academic year. This agreement allows eligible students to enroll in the post-secondary enrollment options PSEO courses. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Jason, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Donna. Any questions, comments?
Pretty standard, this is just with Mankato State, or Minnesota State.
I think we had one last month, so, okay. Motion by Jason, a second by Donna, to approve the Joint Powers Agreement with the Minnesota State University Mankato in order to allow eligible students to enroll in post-secondary enrollment options PSEO courses for the 2024-2025 academic year. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item F, paraprofessional hours. Principal Butler, Principals Butler and Foss request approving the following changes of hours for paraprofessionals in their buildings for the 2024-2025 school year. Natalie Otto, an increase in .5 per day effective- Natalie Otto, an increase in .5 per day effective 9/3/2024. And Tiana Huser, an increase in .25 weekly effective 9/9/2024. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
I have a motion by Donna, do I have a second? And a second by John, to approve the following changes of hours for para-professionals as requested. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Sorry, I didn't ask.
Well, I was just going to add, you see these, and they're fairly small changes. They're, they're primarily due to when students arrive on buses and things like that, and then per audit, the, the people that work X amount of hours, they need to have their contracts match. So that's why these tweaks sometimes are in front of you, where you could look at it like it's just a little bit of time, but that's the purpose for, for having that, so.
Okay, thank you. Action item G, Southwest Minnesota State University College and School Contract. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the CIS College and School, College in School contract with South, Southwest Minnesota State University for the 2024-2025 academic year. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by John, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Jason, to approve the CIS contract with Southwest Minnesota State University for the 2024-2025 academic year. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item H, First Readings, Reading of Policies. It is the recommendation of the Policy Committee to bring back the following policies for adoption at the next school board meeting. Policy 102, Equal Educational Opportunity. 413, Harassment and Violence. 416, Drug, Alcohol, and Cannabis Testing. 418, Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free School. 419, Tobacco-Free Environment. 425, Staff Development and Mentoring. 503, Student Attendance. 506, Student Discipline. 509, Enrollment of Non-Resident Students. 512, School-Sponsored Student Publications. And 513, Student Promotion, Retention, and Program Design. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Jamie, do I have a second?
Second.
Or Jason?
Yep.
So I have a motion by Jamie and a second by Jason, to bring back the policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item I, Second Reading of Policies. The following policies receive their first reading at the August 12th school board meeting. It is the recommendation of the Policy Committee Directors Lovekey and Luckhart and the Superintendent of Schools to adopt the policies listed below. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
I have a motion by Donna, do I have a second? I'll make that second. Motion by Donna, second by myself, to adopt the policies as listed above. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item J, Misalamius, none at this time.
Alicia, can I just mention one?
Yeah.
I just want to recognize and acknowledge Jacqueline, our new office employee, working as HR and administrative assistant, is joining us tonight, so if you haven't met her, stop and say hi. But we've been busy kind of slowly training her in some, in some things, and she's doing a great job, so we invited her to join the board meeting tonight to see, see how a board meeting goes. So, thanks to Jacqueline and Trish and Pam, I've been doing a lot of training with her the last couple weeks, so, thank you, Jacqueline.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Adorn. Do I have a motion to Adorn? I have a motion by Donna, do I have a second? And a second by Jamie, to Adorn at 7:16. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.